I'd like to call the meeting to order if we can stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everybody for coming. We have no visitors signed in wishing to speak. I did have some written communication during the week from some about the BOSI's Board of Education, two incumbents running that sent letters that I had sent out to all of you. So that was only piece of written communication. Reported boards and committee, I can just report on one that Mrs. Ernst, Mr. Penella, Mrs. Bazinski and I attended on January 28th since our last meeting. BOSI, or Superintendent's Association, was there?
Yes, City Niagara School Superintendent's.
They ran a foundation aid workshop out at the BOSI's and kind of walked us through the foundation aid formula, had us kind of working to calculate our own, had all these worksheets for us. So it was very interesting. I know some of you are going to report on some of that stuff, so I'll leave all some of that for you. I know there were some other events, so.
So myself, Ms. Goldbach, Mr. Penella, Ms. Bazinski went to the legislator breakfast. And so we had our legislator there, Karen Mayhem, Tim Kennedy was there, and then there was Rancin' Office. I'm not sure if there's anybody else. But it, I mean, I guess, you could talk about it, but my takeaway from it was, and really we were there, I guess, to ask them questions. They didn't have any formal remarks or any presentations to give us. I guess this was our chance to ask them questions. And my big takeaway from them was if you don't ask, well, actually two, so if you don't ask, they're not going to know. And you've got to speak up and let them know what it is that, you know, what is it you want? What do you need? What, you know, out of this budget didn't, you know, is affecting you? And the other takeaway was that the government's, or Cuomo's proposal, the governor's proposal is his proposal, and it still needs to go through the legislature. And hence, you know, we need to, we need to speak up about it, so.
Yeah, no, that was, yeah, it was primarily, the breakfast was primarily a presentation from ECASB and last focused on the legislators who were there, which I think was unfortunate.
Yeah. And I actually think that the second meeting we attended, which was myself and Ms. Goldbach and Mr. Penella, would have been better suited to have taken place before we met with the legislators. And I think there were going to be a tremendous amount of questions after that.
Yeah, so the second one was the Rick Tims dessert from ECASB. And he, he's such a good speaker, you know, he's very passionate and very entertaining. But he gave a ton of good information about how it all works, you know, how the aid is calculated and all the formulas for the different tiers and things like that, and pretty much, you know, how we're all getting shafted. And I know Mr. Penella will be talking a lot about that with his piece of the presentation tonight. But, you know, like Mr. Vebel said, it would have been very helpful to have all that information prior so that we could have that voice and be able to express those same things to the legislators who were at the breakfast. That might be a great suggestion to pass along to them.
And the other thing, Lad and Mr. Penella will talk about this, but you said shafted, that we are really getting shafted.
Yeah.
And so we have some advocacy to do on our behalf. Some of this info is, you know, what we went through, so you'll all get this in.
Some of the information that we received at our workshop, you probably saw that if you saw the article over the weekend that Mr. Cornell was quoted and a bunch of other superintendents, that's kind of like what we had attended that they were quoting on, so, which is.
Yeah, I think that two things stand out, which I hope to present. You know, it can be overwhelming at times, especially when you start digging into how that formula works. But, you know, when you boil it down to the basics, the amount of aid and foundation aid specifically is inadequate and the way it's being distributed is inequitable. So I think those are the two things that we really need to drive home to our legislator. And I have some data that I've compiled from various sources, including those meetings and other things that I was able to find that hopefully streamlines the message a little bit for us when we do have a chance to speak with them and get together. But that will be part of the feedback that, you know, hopefully you all can provide after we get a chance to see that.
Great. Any other committee meetings?
Yes, we had a policy committee meeting. And I'm just going to bring everybody's attention to the fact that we do have some new policies, I'm sorry, revised policies, and just one new policy that we reviewed. Those are on our agenda to approve tonight. And the new policy is just in response to the new election law. And it's the policy for voter and pre-registration. And that's it.
Anyone else? All right, I'll turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
Oh, thank you. I'm pleased to welcome Mrs. Bazinski. So we have sort of a joint presentation. We have two things that we'd like to provide you with. First, Mrs. Bazinski can give you our February budget development update. Since the last time we had a presentation in December, we've received the executive proposal from the governor. We've also had some updates on CPI, tax cap, and some of those things. So Mrs. Bazinski can provide you with an update on that. And then I'd like to talk a little bit about the governor's executive proposal and what it looks like and maybe some of those advocacy points that we've mentioned previously. Welcome, Laura.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we are going to continue with the same format that we used all through the last budget development season and started again in December, where we'll look at our assumptions and projections for both revenues and expenditures, look at an overall picture, and then summarize some of the key points. So anything that's changed from our December presentation is highlighted in blue so that our presentations build up to the final budget that we'll be adopting in April. So we do have an update on our property tax levy. CPI came in at 1.81 percent and we had projected 1.8 percent. So we were pretty close there. It was a change of just like $3,600. It was really insignificant as far as CPI. But what did have a significant change was our capital exclusion. And that is the amount we're allowed to increase our levy, which is the difference between our debt payments and any building aid that we'll be receiving to offset those payments. Because the voters authorized those expenses separately with a budget vote or with a referendum, we're allowed to tax the financing of that project. And it's allowed to be above and beyond the 2 percent, which is 2 percent is 1.81 percent. The great news is that while our levy, our allowable levy is decreasing 380,000, that's because our borrowing for our $28 million bond was extremely favorable. And we will be spending $390,000 less next year than we had originally predicted based on the interest rate that we received, which is great news. And this demonstrates exactly how having that great bond rating with Moody's and being able to control that and help drive that in a positive way does actually benefit our taxpayers because it is dollar for dollar a decrease on the expenditures, but then also a decrease in what we're taxing our community.
So I know I didn't attend the actual bond signing, but I saw the results from the, when we put it out for sale. We ended up getting just a little bit more than 1.6 in our interest rate, but we also generated some premium, which our advisors advised us to use to knock off the principal of the 28 million, which will then result in savings annually moving forward. So to the board, kudos to you and your decision to go to a full bond at this point as opposed to doing another short-term borrowing in the form of a ban for one year. That was the right decision.
Could I just, because I should have updated, you know, that there was the bond signing. I did report out to the board, you know, that day that, you know, we did have the bond signing. But, you know, just so everybody hears that, you know, we had 11 people, you know, institutions bidding on our bonds, which Hudson Russ says they thought might be a record. I think the ultimate, our effective rate was about 1.63 percent that we're borrowing at. So just an incredible rate. And one of the things that they do cite is our growth in our reserve accounts is one of those factors that help with our low borrowing. So just so everybody knows.
And while that result is saving us in next year's budget, overall, in the long-term financing from what our projections were, we're saving about $2.5 million over the life of the bond, which is just amazing. State aid is a hot topic right now, so Mr. Penella will dive into that a little more. But because there are so many uncertainties with the governor's proposal and what it will actually be, we used the actual state aid runs that came out with two exceptions. The state aid runs include our UPK monies. There's just over 377,000 in UPK grant. But we don't record that as a revenue to general fund because it's actually a grant. And we use those funds and we use them every year, but it's a grant. It's not a general fund revenue. And another change that was made was how the state is projecting our building aid. So normally, if you have your reports in by a certain date, 18 months go by, they'll project your building aid for you in future years. This year, the state has changed that. And unless your certificate of substantial completion is filed, they won't project the aid in your runs. But when you submit it throughout the course of the year, you will still get the aid, which is a little bit deceiving because it makes it look like we're not getting it because it's not projected. But we actually will get it. Our project is on schedule and we will have the form submitted on time. So for state aid, building aid, we're using our financial advisors' projections, which are about $688,000 higher than what is projected in the state aid runs. So those will be the two changes that, if you were looking at our numbers versus the runs that were published, those are the two changes. Everything else we kept there. So miscellaneous revenues and transfers are the same as our December presentation. So this leaves us with a tax levy allowable percentage of 0.949. And that incorporates the 1.81 percent, which is really 2 percent, which isn't 2 percent, and our exclusion. And the reason it's lower is because our exclusion in prior years was higher. And with our favorable bond results, our exclusion is lowered, but our expenses are lowered the same amount. So we're just under 1 percent of an allowable tax levy increase. State aid is projected to go up 8.4 percent. And that is the governor's runs plus the 688,000 that we believe we will be receiving in building aid that is not reflected in the runs. Our miscellaneous revenues are the same estimates that we used in December, as well as our transferred and appropriated fund balance. That's the $500,000 that offsets a $500,000 expenditure line that we use only in the event of unforeseen expenses or emergencies. It leaves us with an overall revenue increase of just under 3 percent, or $61.2 million. On the expenditures, we didn't make any changes yet to any personnel lines. So those are the same as they were in December. We do have an update for our TRS rate. In December, we projected a 9.25. We were being conservative on the other side. That was the bottom of the range. And the number came in at 9.54. It's up from 8.86 in the prior year. And that is an additional increase of 73,000 from the increase that we had projected in December, which is an overall budget-to-budget increase of 284,000. So you can see a very small increase in the rate is a significant impact on our budget. And those expenses are not allowed to be exclusions in the tax cap until the increase succeeds 2 percent. So we really need to absorb, or are expected to absorb, a very large increase in our budget before we're allowed to incorporate that into the tax cap calculation.
That was part of the reason why last year, a big focus of our advocacy efforts was around creating the TRS reserve. And luckily, that went through last year's budget. And we did create a TRS reserve, as you know, and it is almost fully funded, which may come in handy in years when you have swings in those contribution rates.
Great news on our health insurance. We are continuing to see positive movement. We projected a 5 percent increase because we didn't have our numbers quite yet. And Mr. Belial and I met with Premier a couple of weeks ago. And due to some very favorable results on our prescription rebates, they were able to realize another $200,000 in savings for increased rebates that we'll be receiving on our script usage. So we can reduce our increase to a 2.75 percent increase, which is a $100,000 increase to our budget. So that was great news because it helped close our gap by about $150,000. In general support, we had discussed some increases during the January presentation. And now some more of those numbers coming in. So while we do have increases in those areas, the increases are a little bit less than what we had originally projected. So we have our utilities. We had increased $28,000 and that, that's for all of our utilities. And with our new membership in SMAC, which was new this year, this was the first time we had our projection ratings, and we were able to increase only $8,000. So that was a $20,000 decrease from December. In mandated water testing, so that's the lead testing that we're required to do every few years, we had $25,000 in there and we reduced it to an increase of 10. And legal fees, we had $100,000 of an increase. But because we had secured some coverage for some of our claims, we felt comfortable reducing that to $50,000. And then there are some minor changes between budget codes that went from general support down to instruction of about $7,000. So that left our general support increase of 63,000 or just under 3 percent. Instruction increased 136,000. And the changes there were some minor changes in special education, tuition services, as well as that $7,000 transfer from general support. So there were very small changes there. BOSI's was a big change for us. In our December presentation, we estimated a 3 percent increase. And a large group of us met in this room and met with BOSI's and went line by line through pages and pages of services and came up with our projected spending for next year, which is an increase of just under 2 percent instead of 3 percent, which is a $70,000 increase. So we were able to reduce, again, our gap a little bit by having those numbers be a little bit more accurate to what we'll really be spending next year. Transportation had a decrease of $110,000 from our December presentation. When we estimated that, we hadn't yet come to an agreement with, for a student to do a two-year contract extension. So we had a 5 percent increase in spending estimated. And our contract extension keeps our annual increases to CPI. So we rolled our expenses up 1.8 percent instead of 5 percent. So that was another area that we saw some reduction in our gap. And then debt service. We did talk about our debt service when we talked about capital exclusion. So we did see a significant reduction there due to that bond, the $28 million bond, which is now a $24.9 million bond.
And again, there's positive news there, but I think an area of concern with the way the tax cap formula works is, you know, although we saw the decrease in our borrowing, in our expenditure on debt service, offset by the increase in our aid from the state, it puts our levy at under 1 percent, which becomes sort of the basis that we work off of when we go to do next year's tax cap calculation. So we're starting at a very low number when we start to run that formula and look at next year's number. So unfortunately, those parts are, you know, there's kind of a push and pull effect as it relates to debt service and the exclusions within the levy. The only negative thing that I would say is moving forward, we start at that 0.9 percent for our levy in next year's formula when we go to calculate next year's levy.
So our expenditure projections are summarized here. All together, we have $63 million expenditure budget, which is a 4.68 percent increase. And it's reduced from, I think it was about 6 percent in December. And as Mr. Penella talked about, you can see in the debt service line, when you look at the projections in years moving forward, those numbers start to decrease as debt is paid off and no new debt is coming on at that point, which ends up resulting in further decreases to our capital exclusion and possibly eventually a negative tax cap calculation. So overall, our gap is now just over $1 million, 61.8 in revenues to 62.9 in expenditures.
As Mrs. Bazinski mentioned, it doesn't include any personnel changes. On the agenda, we have multiple retirements, you know, due to, our resignations due to retirement, which we know will affect those projections as we move forward. And the administrative cabinet and Mrs. Bazinski and I have all been working very hard over just January. It's a busy month for budget development to try to narrow that gap. And of course, during our executive session, we have some additions or reductions to talk to you about relative to closing that gap further.
So we still maintain the same optional gap closers for the $1 million. We have any further increases of state aid that might be realized with the late March, early April runs. Salary breakage from the retirements that are on your agenda for this evening. Any further spending reductions, a potential increase in fund balance allocation. So one thing to remember is currently, not only do we have the $500,000 appropriated to offset the 500, but we have an additional $420,000 fund balance to close our gap. And that is not included in here yet. So that would be something that we could look at as well, maintaining that allocation from the current year. The levy increase above cap is an option that the board can choose. And then any additional appropriations from reserves, as Mr. Penella mentioned, the TRS reserve is one option. Normally, at this meeting, we have our tax cap calculation finalized. This year, we do not. One of the new pieces of guidance that passed was allowing the BOSI's capital expenses to be excluded. But we don't have information yet on how we're able to calculate that because we need to net it against the BOSI's aid that we receive. So we have to wait for BOSI's to send all of their districts the information that they're allowed to incorporate into their tax levy cap, and we don't have that yet. So the cap is due by March 1st, and we are expecting to have that information anytime.
And just as, in another, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Just to highlight, that's another important piece of advocacy that we were successful with. Prior to, most recently, we were not allowed to exclude BOSI's capital costs. So you may recall, last year, we talked about whether or not we would support BOSI's doing a capital project because there's an increase, there's a cost to all the component districts based on enrollment and size, et cetera. And that normally was not an exclusion in the tax cap formula. But through advocacy efforts, the legislators passed a law that now allows those to be included. But it's very new. So as Mrs. Bazinski pointed out, we don't know exactly how that calculation works. But we do know it will benefit us once we have the final numbers.
We'll be able to exclude, again, the net between what we pay BOSI's and the aid that we receive, the BOSI's aid that we receive. There's some sticky points because you pay it one year and you don't receive the aid until the following year. So you might be comparing a current year payment with a prior year aid payment, but we don't have those answers yet. Normally, we would ask the board to verbally approve our tax cap calculation at the number that we've presented, but because we don't know what it is, we're hoping that the board could perhaps agree to either go up to cap or whether or not you want to go over cap or maybe have that discussion now of where you want to land, but not with a specific number, knowing that it'll be very close. Our capital payment to BOSI's in the prior year and the current year is between 17,000 and 18,000. Then we get 8 on top of that. So it'll be maybe a $10,000 to $12,000 increase in our levy, so it won't be significant. Next year, it will be significant because next year's the first year we have to make our BOSI's capital project payment.
So I guess the question is, and I'll just tell them why we need them to answer it without all the information. We are required to tell the Comptroller's Office by March 1st whether or not we are going to be tax cap compliant. So we don't tell them exactly what our levy is going to be, but we do tell them whether or not we're going to comply with the tax cap. And there's a March 1st deadline on that. So I think what we're looking for is, since we don't meet again until March 3rd, and we may not have that number until we present the next budget until March 17th, are you okay with us reporting by March 1st that we're going to be tax cap compliant with the caveat that if we decide, based on the inactive budget, to change our mind, we are able to amend that? It's not locked in and we're unable to change our mind if we do want to exceed the cap? But initially, you can tell them, yes.
Because that's what I recall, we can change our mind if we want.
All the way through budget adoption in May, by the voters, budget approval by the voters.
Ms. Arrington, are you good with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Let's go. Let's go.
Yes.
Is that mine?
So we're going to be tax cap compliant for now.
Which is just under 1 percent of the levy increase. Is the next presentation up here?
Yeah, does anyone have any questions before Mrs. Bazinski concludes her presentation?
I just have one. Can you just tell me what alternative education programming is?
Yes, alternative is our long-term suspension, out-of-school suspension, short-term. We have an after-school program. It looks like a half-day afternoon program called Twilight that some kids go to. They're having difficulty finding success in a traditional school setting. There's an alternative education placement called Edu Academy that, again, if kids aren't finding success here, that's an option for them. We have slots every year in those areas for students that don't benefit as much in our buildings. Those costs for BOSI's are increasing this year. So we increased some of our slots a little bit, but the costs for those slots increased, which caused the fluctuation in the budget. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
So one of my favorite people, when I was growing up, he's since passed, but had a very strong impact on me as a child, was my mother's father, my grandfather. He was retired almost my whole life, which was amazing to me. But he was a hobbyist, being retired. So he used to like to tinker with things. He used to like to take things apart, put things together. And one of his hobbies, as he started to grow older, became magic. So he bought me this book that kind of reminded me of the executive budget proposal. And I found it in this bin I have in my basement.
I found it in this bin I have in my basement of my stuff that my mom packed up when I moved out years ago and said, here's, it's either going with you or we're throwing it out. But as I was looking at the executive budget proposal, it reminded me a lot of this book because some things appeared, some things appeared not to be what they are, and then in some cases, some things just started to disappear. So as we get moving forward, we'll take a look at what the executive proposal offers. So I'm trying to break it down here to the basics, or the things that have the greatest impact on us, but in your packet, I did put the summary of the entire executive budget proposal from the New York State School Boards Association, and they do a very nice job of talking about each and every proposal and what the New York State School Board's reaction to it is, or level of support. I focused, for the purposes of this presentation, on mostly financial pieces of his proposal and the ones that have the most significant impact on us as a district. So first of all, he's proposed an $826 million increase over current-year levels. Most reasonable estimates have said that we need $1.6 billion just to continue current school year services, and the Board of Regents called for a $2 billion increase, which includes a commitment to fully phase in foundation, the fully funding of foundation aid. One of the biggest surprises in his budget proposal was the consolidation of some of the expense-based aids. So there are 10 categories of expense-based aids, and when I say expense-based aids, I mean aids similar to BOCs' aid, where we spend money in the current year and then the next year, we generate revenue on that. So what he has proposed to do is take 10 of those categories and roll them into the foundation aid number, and then, moving forward, we would not continue to receive revenue based on how much we spend, rather, we would receive revenue based on how much he or the legislators decide to increase that aid over time. So I highlight here, BOCs' aid being the most significant one, because in our current year, we're generating about $1.5 million in revenue from expenditures from last year, which were around $3.3 million. So it's a great way for us to generate revenue, but it's also a great way, you know, statewide, the BOCs' model, for us to share services with our component districts in order to keep costs down for all of us. So our current BOCs' aid ratio is 66.4%, meaning for every dollar we spend, we get 66 cents back. And he's proposed to move that into the foundation aid, which would really inhibit our ability to generate revenue through those expenses. He's also proposed an adjustment to transportation aid, which is also another expense-based aid, but he has not rolled it into the foundation aid formula, but he's proposing adjustments that, in summary, would result in less generous reimbursement rates for us. And our current rate is, you know, 70% right now, and I think our contract with First Student is somewhere around $1.6 million, and as you saw, it's going up by CPI every year, about 1.6.
I think it's even higher than that.
It's higher than that, but I know our, we generate revenue on that, and he's proposing to change that. In addition, in our building aid, he's also proposed a new tier to lower the reimbursement ratio. So you can see, there's a theme within his proposal. Our current ratio is 75%, so for every, you know, is a four-to-one ratio, we are able to improve our facilities and generate revenue on that to offset the burden onto the taxpayers. And as you know, we have a beloved high school that is an architectural gem, but it was built in 1930. So it needs to be modernized, not only mechanically, but aesthetically, in order for it to continue to serve our community well over time. And now we have buildings here that were, that are reaching historical status, you know, built in the 1950s. So we know in order for our schools to be useful and meaningful for the community moving forward, they need to be modernized. One of the things that was interesting is that he's also been proposed to restrict the allowance for athletic fields unless they are necessary to meet physical education requirements. And that stood out to me in the proposal because we just went through Phase 1 of our current capital project, where we replaced an existing turf that we have had since 2004, 2005, and it reached its useful life, but we needed to replace it. Most of the foundation and drainage was pretty good, and the pad, but we needed a new carpet, and we also redid our track, which we know is heavily utilized by our community. And, you know, that was almost $2 million for that phase of that project, which included tennis court work and some other site work. But if we are unable to continue to maintain that facility, or potentially expand our facility because of the restriction on athletic fields, it could hurt our programming or hurt our ability to maintain what we currently have. So those are some of the basics, and then, like I said, there's other proposals. You can read the extensive list on your own. I'd really like to focus on the top two, the overall amount, including with a focus on foundation aid, but then the consolidation of the expense-based aids and that impact for us. So foundation aid, initially, out of that 800 million plus, he's proposed 504 million in foundation aid. There's another 200 million in there that he's putting just to high-need school districts, which is typically your Big Four in New York City, and then he's restricting 550 million for community school set aside, which we don't qualify for. Just as a note, $3.8 billion is needed if he were to fully fund the foundation aid formula, which was the result of a lawsuit from 2006, known as the Campaign for Fiscal Equity. So most people will tell you that 504 million is inadequate in and of itself, and later, I'll talk to you about how that 504 is being distributed because it's completely unequal in addition to being inadequate. So as I had mentioned before, he includes 10 expense-based aids in the foundation aid. So here's where the sleight of hand comes in. It makes it look like we're making progress towards full funding of the foundation aid formula, because under the current law, $3.8 billion is needed for the state as a whole to fully fund that formula, but he's taking $1.8 billion of expense-based aids and folding it into the foundation aid formula, so it looks like the gap is narrowing on how much is owed for foundation aid. So I put a little bit of formula down here. $3.8 billion owed minus $1.8 billion in expense-based aids, minus the 504 million increase he's proposed, equals $1.5 billion owed, theoretically. However, that $1.8 billion that we're getting in expense-based aids that he's moved to foundation aid is already money that's owed to us. So it's like taking the money from one pocket and putting it into the other pocket, you're not increasing the overall amount, you're just shifting where you have it stored and how you're distributing it. So this is how the aid runs came out after the governor proposed them. So in the current year, our foundation aid number is like 7.6 million. So the hard part about this is it's making it very difficult to compare from year to year, because in the current year, those 10 expense-based aids are broken out, and then he's proposed where they are consolidated. So what we've been trying to do since he proposed this in January is consolidate last year's to see what it would look like, so you can compare it to this year, and then deconstruct this year's to compare it to this year, so you can see an apples-to-apples comparison. So I have both of them here. So this was the governor's proposal. In the middle is next year, and then on the left is the current year with our expense-based aids rolled in. So when we get to the tiers, you'll see that we fall into Tier E, which means that we are getting a whopping 0.25% increase in foundation aid, or a $23,000 increase from one year to the next. The way that breaks down is there's the foundation aid of 9.4 million, the building aid of 3.9, which Mrs. Bozinski mentioned, we really estimate that to be 4.6 because of how they're estimating it at this point without having that substantially complete certificate. So we know that's going to be off. The transportation aid is not rolled into the expense-based aids, so that is an estimate that's in line with what we are expecting. Our private high-cost aid has gone up slightly, 77,000, and our public excess cost aid for how we're, money we're spending on servicing high-cost special education students is going up slightly. So what you see here is a total aid package of 17.4 million, or this is what was reported in the Buffalo News from the aid runs, an increase of 1.18%, but that increase is generally due to the increase in public excess cost aid and public excess cost high aid, it's not due to a foundation aid increase. That increase was only 0.25%. So that's an expenditure-based aid based on services we're providing to kids in our district. So that's what it looked like when the proposal came out. So then we tried to pull back and deconstruct our expense-based aids. So this is the foundation aid only, so that's that 9.5 million. I didn't include those other categories of transportation, building, et cetera. So our current year number is 7.6. Moving into this year, it stayed at 7.6. Our BOCs' aid is estimated, which we think that number's wrong, because again, that's one of those data pieces that we're reporting it, BOCs is reporting it, and the state's not pulling the most recent data to do their estimates. So we actually think that number is going to be a little bit higher, and in Mrs. Bozinski's projections that she just presented, I think we had it estimated at around 1.3 million, which we still think is conservative. But what he's proposed is to take all these 10 categories, roll them into that number of 7.6 million, which then gives him the ability, moving forward, to cap it. If he decides, well, we're going to increase it by 2% next year, then it's 2% regardless of how much we've spent in these 10 categories. Again, the most significant being BOCs' aid, because these other ones are typically pretty consistent from year to year. As you can see, there's very minimal movement. So in this proposal, our expense-based aids from the current year of 1.8 million has actually dropped according to the estimates they're using to 1.6 million, but what he's proposing to do is hold us harmless from the current year, and so that 258 million added to the 0.25% that we received, the 23,000, equals 282,000, which accounts for the increase from year to year in our foundation aid. So it's really a 0.25% increase, but when you take the expense-based aids and roll them in, and you hold us harmless, and you break those down, it looks like there's almost, you know, an additional increase, but it's money that we're generating from current-year expenditures. So that's really how that breaks down. You know, the biggest concern, as I have mentioned before, is it makes it look like there's progress towards fully funding the foundation aid formula, which educators for years, decades, have been asking for by rolling that 1.8 billion into that 3.8 billion that's owed. So now it appears to falsely have been minimized, or excuse me, lowered to a $1.5 billion gap. So that's one of the areas from the foundation aid. You know, then you talk about the distribution. So I referenced that. He's broken the state up into five tiers, A through E. I've highlighted E because that's the tier that we fall in. His goal, according to his presentation when he delivered his budget, was to give 80% to 85% of the aid to high-needs districts. So what he's done here is create tiers that will allow his aid to be siphoned through, and when you listen to experts on state aid, like Dr. Tims and other folks, you know, they will tell you that when you're not fully funding that foundation aid formula, so 3.8 billion's needed, he's putting in 500 million, you know you're going to be, come in underfunded, so now he creates these tiers to try to push the money to where he wants it to go, and in this case, it's high-needs districts. So in Tier A, that's where you have 53% of the foundation aid going, or 237 million of that 500 million that was proposed, and that's going to 29 of the school districts in the state. So that's your, you know, Big Four, New York City, and some of your small cities. That ends up being $195 per student in new foundation aid. Then if you move down to Tier B, there's 14% of the proposed money that's going to 95 school districts. Tier C, you have 10% of the money going to 41 districts. You know, Tier D, you have 10% of the money going to 218 districts, and then you get the leftovers, which is Tier E, which is us, where you have 48 million or 10% of the money going to 290 districts, or 43% of the districts statewide, which ends up being a whopping $88 per student, which, according to our enrollment of around 2,900, you multiply that by $88, that's where you get our $23,000 increase that we saw.
And one of the interesting things that Rick Tims talked about was how these tiers were calculated, and it is, it's like made-up formulas.
Yeah. I can't, I can't even explain it. There's a description of how the tiers are calculated, but a lot of it's based on the original foundation aid formula, but you can tell they were created to make sure that the money goes to where they intended it to go. That was the general takeaway.
Certain districts got it, and then they had to roll in other similar districts to, in those tiers.
Well, I think the other interesting thing to note is that 10.9% of the money goes to fund 20.8% of the students.
Yeah, I didn't put the percent of the students, but I did put the percent of the districts and the number of districts. But you'll see that the percent of the students is highest in Tier A because you're talking about New York City, Buffalo, Rochester, Syracuse, Yonkers, you know, the largest districts in the state. But, you know, again, I think some of the things that have been said over the workshops we've been to are, you know, there's not enough money in the pie to go around, so now you end up with winners and losers in this formula and how it's distributed when, you know, all of the kids in the state deserve to be winners. They all need an appropriate education.
And just to add on to the unequal part of this too, is that the other districts within Amherst are not even in our tier.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what I've been sort of wrapping my head around. So I did receive a data spreadsheet from a friend of mine who's a business administrator in the, in another part of the state, and it showed the percent of fully funded foundation aid that has been received. So when I started looking at that, you know, when you look at our data and you see 7.6 million in foundation aid, you know, obviously, we need more, but they also have statistics out there that show how much you should be receiving if that formula was fully funded. So of that 3.8 billion that's owed to that formula, according to the Campaign for Fiscal Equity, how does it affect us specifically when it's not fully funded? So that's what I'd like to show you in the next couple slides. So going back to-
Can I make one other point?
Sure.
So I think the point that he just made, though, is what makes the whole building aid or the expense-based aids being rolled into foundation even worse for us, because we're being treated not horribly by the foundation aid formula. So if you put more of those expense-based aids into that, that just means that we get treated even worse.
Yes, because the formula's not working for us. And as Mrs. Golhak and I were talking prior to the meeting, you know, when you advocate to the legislators, they like to see data, which is what I've tried to pull together here to illustrate the fact that we need more funding, but I can't tell you in the 12 pages of the foundation aid formula why it's happening. And I've asked some experts in the field, why is this happening to us? Because this is what's happening to us. So our current year foundation aid is 7.6 million. If that formula was fully funded, it would, we would be getting 12.8 million, and as a result, we are only getting about 59% of our full foundation aid amount. So I was bothered by that, because when I had this presented to me in that data spreadsheet that I got from a friend of mine outside of this region, I said, well, how do we compare to the rest of the state? And I was unpleasantly surprised to find out that 92% of the districts statewide are getting more, a higher percentage of their full foundation aid amount. So when you look, when the foundation aid formula began back in '07-'08 school year, there was a commitment at the time by the governor and the legislators to phase in full funding of it. So the first year, they gave like 1.4 billion to it, the second year, they gave like 1.4 The second year, they gave like 1.4 billion to it. And then we hit the skids because the state's finances went downhill. And it was right when we transitioned from Spitzer to Patterson. Patterson came in and made drastic changes to the foundation aid formula, and on top of that, implemented the gap elimination adjustment, which further took aid from schools. So starting way back when this started, before the formula ever ran for the first time, we were supposed to be getting $9 million, and we only got 5.6 that first year. And I don't know how the formula ended up being so negative towards Amherst, but I do know it's happening, and somebody needs to fix it. So that's the history of our foundation aid. On average, we've only gotten about 58% of our full amount. And you can see it goes from 59 to 63, 57, 56, but it's hovered around that 58, 59% all along. So and then when I move, this, this prompted me to look a little deeper. So as I mentioned, in the state, 92% of the districts statewide are receiving a higher percentage of their full foundation aid. So then I wanted to look at where we are in Erie County and in our region. So when I looked at Erie County, I was able to find that we are second to only Cheetah Waga by a very small percentage, a tenth of a point, or a tenth of a percentage, in the amount of foundation aid we're receiving. So we are receiving 59%. Cheetah Waga's receiving 59% of their foundation aid amount. But then as I look at this, I shake my head because there are districts that are receiving over 100% of their foundation aid amount. And as Mrs. Goldhawk mentioned, you know, there's three school districts in the town of Amherst, and one of them is getting, you know, almost 70% of their full foundation aid amount. Another one is getting almost 90% of their full foundation aid amount, and we're getting around 60% of our full foundation aid amount. So they tell me the foundation aid formula is supposed to work on demographics and work on need. You know, so they tell me, well, it's our combined wealth ratio, it's the number of L's students you have, it's your free and reduced lunch numbers. And again, I think to myself, we are higher in those categories in this district than many of the people that are receiving more than us. So I went and looked at some of those numbers also for comparison. So they use a three-year triple count, which is free and reduced-priced lunch, but they only use it for K to six only. So we do have a increasing free and reduced-priced lunch number. In fact, today I checked with Dan Farley, our Chief Information Officer, and district-wide, that number today is 35%. There's 1,000, over 1,100 students in this district receiving free or reduced-priced lunch. But right now, in the formula that drives our state aid, the number that's being used is 29.2%. So that's a problem right there. Our English-language learner population has doubled since 2015-'16. In 2015-'16, it was 83, now it's 164. And then our combined wealth ratio is right around 1. In fact, if you look at the estimate that's being used in this year's governor's budget proposal, it actually went down to 0.97. And that combined wealth ratio is our income wealth, which is somewhere around 1.1, 1.2, and it's our property wealth, which is normally around 0.7, 0.8. So they average those two to come up with the combined wealth ratio. So I'm told that, and then there's a lot of data in the foundation aid formula that goes beyond my level of sophistication, but when you talk to folks like Rick Timms, who's an expert in foundation aid formula and state aid, you know, he'll tell you that that formula needs to be updated because they're, in many cases, using data from the 2000 census. And I joked with him, and I said, well, don't they realize the census is taken every 10 years? So there's actually the 2010 census, you know, even though we haven't done the 2021 yet. And he said, yes, they didn't feel like the 2010 census was good enough data because they didn't feel like participation was high enough, so they reverted back to the 2000 census. I worked here in this school dish, in this school as a teacher in the '99-'2000 school year, and I can tell you that the Amherst of 2020 is drastically different than the Amherst of 2000. So that data definitely needs to be updated. But when I go back and look at those districts that are getting significant percentage of their foundation aid, you know, one of them stands out just east of us. I'm not going to name them by name, but, you know, that district is getting 102% of their foundation aid. They're getting more than the formula says they should get. But they have a free and reduced-priced lunch of 10%. They have 26 L's, which is a very small number for a district that size, and 1.1 is their combined wealth ratio. So it's hard for me to understand why this formula is doing what it's doing. And as I mentioned to Mrs. Goldhawk before we started the meeting, I don't think it's our job to figure out why it's doing it. I think it's our job to tell our legislators that this isn't working for us, and this isn't fair. Amherst should not be getting less 60% of our full foundation aid amount when 92% of the districts across the state have received more than that percentage. So for me, our advocacy efforts boil down to three big things. The amount of foundation aid needs to be increased, not only for us, but for the statewide. You know, 504 million isn't going to cut it. The distribution needs to be more equitable. That tier system is not working, and the expense-based aids need to be left alone. So if I, when I have the opportunity to speak to our legislators, those are the things that I'd like to focus on, and those, and that's the data that I'd like to present to them. But of course, I wanted to try it out here tonight, initially, to see if it makes sense and to see if there's any points based on the things that you've all attended that I'm missing or not driving home.
I think you did an excellent job putting the data together in the format you did, because I think it really shows what is truly going on and what we've all witnessed at the meetings we've attended.
The only thing is, and I think you have to drive the point home, that when we first start off with those expense-based aids, it doesn't sound as bad as when you see how bad the formula is working for us.
Yes.
So it's just, it's going to compound all that stuff that's been proposed, it's just going to put us in a worse position.
Yeah, once it's in the formula-
Once they throw it in that formula.
It's going to drag it down.
Yeah.
Very good point. I didn't think about that as much as I was also-
And I don't know where, you know, where it needs to be, but I, I think you drive that point home.
Yeah, I think that, I'm hoping it stays out of there so that we can focus on, don't roll the expense-based aids into the foundation aid, leave them the way they are at their current rates of reimbursement, and now let's focus on foundation aid. But you're right, if it goes in there, we're in trouble because there's a lag on that funding in that formula, which will hurt us even more. But my preference would be advocacy to keep it from happening. Well, I'm glad I've had the opportunity to get this off my chest.
It's been going on forever, though. It's not like it's a new phenomenon, it's been going on.
Yeah, it's been going on. And the thing, you know, the thing that bothers me the most is I can't look to the formula and say, it's this number that's causing us to get less than our, a smaller percentage than everybody else. And I realized, I got to the point where I said, I don't know that I need to tell them why their formula isn't working, but I need to show them that not only in Erie County, but across the state, Amherst is at a bigger disadvantage or a greater disadvantage than most districts. So even if they're not going to fully fund the formula, which they're not going to in one year at 3.8 billion, if they can't make a commitment to fully, phasing that in, they at least need to do something for us to create a Tier F that includes Amherst and the other 8% of the districts that are only getting 59% of their formula, and push some money into that tier to accelerate our attainment towards our full funding.
Well, because then the other problem is, for any dollar that, that we would get, there's so many other dollars that have to go under the current formula to everywhere else.
Right.
To even give us one.
Right. So that's what I'm hoping, that there can, we can shed some light on this so our elected officials can advocate on our behalf during the legislative session. Thank you.
You presented that in a very understandable way. I think that's a great format, you know, for legislators to be able to really understand it and see it.
Well, thank you.
Patrick, you want a copy of that so you can publish that and make good, you know, that's good news.
Please do.
Just, Grandpa Ange out of it. Thank you.
Those are not happy meetings, unfortunately.
No.
No.
I will need a motion for new business items.
I'm going to make a motion for new business items, E1, A through J, 2, A through E, there's actually 2B in there, 3, A, B, C, and F.
We have a second. Any discussion?
Sad about the retirements.
Yeah, there are some.
All those in favor of approving new business items, E1, A through J, 2, A through E, and 3, A through C, and F, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Do we have any follow-up action items? Okay, we will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session for matters pertaining to the appointment of a particular person.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming.